Testing one, two. Can you guys hear me okay out there? Sounds great. Thank you very much. Hang on, we're gonna test the...
Kevin, can you bear us up, Ken?
Hello, sir.
Good morning, Tim.
Sir, what's this?
Kevin, can you hear us? Hey. Hi, Harold. Can I bring you a bottle of water? Would you like?
Sure.
A bottle of water. I don't want to throw too much attention now. You just got here. Yes, sir, we got plenty of them today. It's full service here, Tim. I don't know if you know that or not.
Same place, right next to it.
Start video? Says start video?
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. Welcome. As you come in, if you don't mind muting your audio. Thank you very much.
What?
Right in the middle, right down, down, down. Right there, what's that?
It says participants 12.
Hello, the mute icon is the small microphone in the lower left-hand corner of your screen.
Some people get really sick.
I brought mine.
If you don't mind, sure. 20 hours of just being under the weather.
Next is the portal of the minutes for the March 10th meeting.
I don't think there were... Nothing jumped out at all.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for the March 10th meeting?
So, motion by Chris, a second by Harold to approve the minutes in the March 10th meeting. All those in favor? Thank you. Next, our department head reports and I know Chief Valhalla.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. On Monday, Officer Mora attended a report, report writing and courtroom testimony. That was an all-day class down in Auburn. And the only other thing that I have is the officers have started their BLS training, which is a mandatory every year thing. I believe if I remember right, it's four or five classes, including fire extinguisher safety, bloodborne pathogen, and one other that I can't think of. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Can you say the name of the officer who had the the all-day training?
Mora, M-O-R-A.
M-O-R-A? Oh, I'm correct. Yeah, got it. I just... Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Dan, General Chief Roy.
Yeah, good evening.
Hi.
So, Fire Department had a pretty busy week last week. We ended up going out on three fires, all in, in the town of Monmouth. The first one was a dumpster fire down off 126 at a private residence that ended up resulting in an arrest. So, thanks to the PD and State Police and State Fire Marshal's Office that came out and assisted with that dumpster fire. The second fire we had was out on Route 202. That was a fully involved structure fire down by the Winterford Town Line. Fortunately, the building was unoccupied. The resident had been in Florida for the winter, so the building was unoccupied. We still had crews go in and do a primary search of part of the building, just, just in case, because there was a vehicle in the driveway. But unfortunately, the building's a total loss, but no, no injuries occurred. And we had a great response with mutual aid with about 50 firefighters from a total of five towns, including Monmouth. And then that was Thursday morning, about 12:30 in the morning. So, a lot of us had a sleepless night Thursday. So, train was cut short Thursday night. We just did a critique and went over a few other things, and then we cut everybody loose. Everybody was pretty tired Thursday night. And then Friday, Friday morning, we had a, another structure fire in town. Fortunately, that one self-extinguished due to lack of oxygen. That was a house under construction out on the Blue Road, and they experienced a basement fire from, from a space heater. And again, the building was just tight enough that when the fire got discovered, the fire had mostly self-extinguished. We had a few little smoldering hotspots that had to be put out, but fortunately, the building was saved and it will need some new floor joists up in the basement. But other than that, wrapped up a busy week. As far as outdoor conditions with the burn-in permits and whatnot, I just want to put out a little reminder that we're getting into our dry season. We're not quite there yet with classifications for Main Forestry coming out. So, now's a pretty good time to try to get some outdoor burn-in done before we get into the more class three, four, and five days when we have higher fire dangers. Again, as a reminder, we have online burn-in permits that can be obtained for free here in town. Just go to wardensreport.com, click on Monmouth, and fill out your application. And when you hit the submit button, we get notified that a permit's been issued. Again, our burn times are after 5:00 PM on weekdays or anytime on the weekend, once the classifications come out, which is usually around 8:30 in the morning. Again, after 5:00 PM on the weeknights and then anytime on the weekends. If you try to obtain a permit online and you're not able to log in, that's probably because it's a high-class day and you're automatically being logged out. So, just a little reminder there. And then the last thing I got is we had, we had a little incident with our overhead door during that Blue Road incident on Friday. Bottom two panels got struck by one of our, our engines. No, no, no damage to the engine, but unfortunately, we did wrinkle two of the bottom panels on the door. I'm still waiting for Bob's overhead door to get back to me with a quote to see if he can locate a couple panels, so those can be swapped out. I'm hoping to do that, you know, with little cost, but if he's unable to locate those door panels, the whole door may have to be replaced. But again, I'm just waiting to hear back on, on an estimate for that. Right now, we swap trucks around and we're able to go out through the, the middle bay door with our small, smaller apparatus, which is our tanker. So, that's the one that's being parked in that bay. So, we can still use the bay, but unfortunately, the door is not usable at this time. And that's pretty much all I got for the Fire Department. Any questions?
Anybody else there?
Just a couple of things. The board may remember last year, the Conservation Commission applied for a centennial, bicentennial grant from the state to plant trees and was awarded a $500 grant to do that. Then COVID struck and the board commission was hard-pressed to get together and because what they want to do is hand out seedlings, and they couldn't do that, obviously, because they couldn't have that contact with people. So, it's been a year and they have notified me now that they have found a place where they can order the seedlings and they're gearing up to get ready to do this. They're hoping to, you'll hear more about this, I'm sure, from the Conservation Commission in coming weeks, but they are going to be able to use that money. I was afraid we would be enough having to send it back. Just to let you all know, because this has been a discussion we've been having the last few weeks, I have scheduled a meeting with the department and division heads for a few weeks from now to talk about long-term CIP projects. And I've told them that everything is game for talking, but don't, don't come to the meeting unless you've done some research on costs, even if it just means reaching out to another municipality, find out what they've recently paid for something, just so that we've got something to go on. Included in that long-term CIP is going to be a discussion about road paving. Once we get all of this back, I'll bring it to you, and I'm going to ask that you set some kind, some kind of policy on road paving, especially when it comes to reconstruction of roads, dirt roads in particular, because right now, it doesn't seem that we have a real good system and we're getting a lot of complaints from people about various roads. So, I'll be bringing that back to you in a few weeks. Dennis has informed me that we are now able to take the recording from our Zoom meetings, and I had gotten us a YouTube station back a few months ago, and I thought we might be going to a YouTube format, and we will be uploading those recordings to our YouTube station. I'm gonna try to get the word out as much as I can, so the public who misses these meetings can then go on the YouTube station and watch the meetings at their leisure. And lastly, not to embarrass her, but to congratulate Doreen, our illustrious minute taker who got engaged over the weekend. Congratulations.
I would like to add to when the discussion of the roads, that we did do a cost comparison for road maintenance versus paving of, of the Gilman Road. And that's part of the reason we ended up paving it, because the maintenance costs were pretty close to the paving costs for the same period of time, 10 years. So, I would urge you to have the road manager to do the same for the Cressy slash Pine Hill Road.
And Mike, just to get back to you, on the Gilman Road, I did reach out to the Public Works Director and also to our engineer who was involved in that project. And what you're seeing on the road is pretty much from frostsheaves. It should settle down. They said it was expected. There was only six inches of gravel put underneath. That was what was negotiated and was agreed upon based on the price to do the road. And so, that's the way it is. Keith feels like there should have been more gravel put underneath, but there were six inches, and that was the budget at the time. So, hopefully, it'll kind of, once it warms up a little bit, it won't be an issue.
Now, yeah, hopefully, it's a little bit disappointing, because it was, you know, it's a substantial amount of money to have that concave effect, and you can see water sitting, particularly in the wintertime. It's, it's gonna blow it apart relatively quick, though. I just had higher expectations that that was gonna hold up better. It hasn't even been a year. So, whoever takes a ride out there in Gilman Road, you can see where it's, from the crown to the shoulder, there's actual dips where water is sitting in there. Something to keep in mind for the next roads.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and you know, Keith is a mind like Herb had, and that is if you're going to do it, do it right and do it right from the beginning. And that means, you know, digging down, putting more gravel underneath, and making sure you've got a really good base for the road before you put the covering over it. So, that's the way we'll be looking at it. Now, that may add to the cost. Obviously, more gravel is going to add to the cost, but if you want good roads, it's worth paying for them.
The red road, I believe, they put two feet of gravel on it. It's almost 20 years now, but it's that bad. And that's how it's been going everywhere. Not everywhere. Well, I know when they, they came by my old house, they used to drive down into it, and then they were driving up to it.
They, they didn't, they didn't do that from, from the corner out to the, from the corner of the jack traps out to the, they didn't do that everywhere. So, they, they, they did a good job of identifying where it needed to be done and where it could not be done, because it has tremendous expense. And honestly, we could not have paved the Gilman Road and the Packer Road if we had done a complete base rebuild and, and, you know, just couldn't have done it. So, it may not be at interstate standards, but it's, I believe that, you know, like Keith said, that's, the engineer said those, the wintertime roads, he, it shouldn't settle down, should be okay.
Regarding that CIP plans, there were, well, there's a couple of articles in the latest main town, city and town. And one had to do with construction projects. And I think it mentioned maybe some town putting, getting a lot of money for, through a grant procedure, I think we've used before. It's a good article, if you haven't read it yet. And then there was an article in there about electric vehicles. That some town is, I guess, who died is providing them, maybe, and not like yet another town, it's out of Maine. Got some, maybe a police car or some other car, like $50 a month with, with all the various things that you get from electricity or, what is it, efficiency management or something.
I did have a conversation with the police chief about electric vehicles. The conversation is, is ongoing.
That's a tough one.
Yeah, it is.
That's, that's gonna be, there's gonna have to be some serious improvements in battery life to start putting emergency vehicles off the electric. They get about 350 miles thing and that, and I know that some of them are really heavy cars. I mean, you can go 0 to 60 in like five seconds or something. But emergency vehicles are more, they take a lot more power with all the lights and radios. You know, so, so even if you're just sitting there, I'd burn it and out.
And on a really, really cold day, it wears the battery down faster. So, we take all of those things into consideration.
I wonder if those towns did. I'd have to check. Yeah, I'm curious about that. Yeah, sure. They're good, good articles. I usually don't find stuff that's so interesting. This was good. Anyway. So, on to select board reports. I guess I already did that. Any other select board reports? Yeah, okay. Public comment? Any public out there? Yeah? Chief Roy?
Yeah. I just want to comment that I love the red, white, and blue tabletops. Is that Dennis or is that a?
That's Dennis.
Yes, I had, I had to figure, so. Prox to Dennis.
Very well done.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That was it, public comment?
Yes.
And the next thing is to authorize the town manager to sign an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement and a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Beckett Academy for the Petrel School.
Hi, this is the Select Board. You'll remember a couple of months ago, Beckett Academy made an offer on the Petrel Elementary School, full-price offer of $550,000. But it was also contingent on them doing inspections, which we extended the timeframe a couple of times for them to complete. And they have done all their inspections based on what they found will be the cost for renovating the building regarding the roof, the boilers, removing tanks eventually, and making the school habitable and safe for children again. They have come back with a counter offer now of $300,000. The other thing that the Select Board had agreed upon a few meetings ago was a payment in lieu of taxes, because Beckett is a nonprofit. They cannot be forced to pay taxes, and they have agreed to pay a payment in lieu of taxes. Originally, the Select Board had come in with a fee of $14,000 plus, and part of this amendment is to reduce that fee to a yearly fee of $9,075. You have in front of you this evening, a change that came to me about an hour ago. The last amendment had been, had a section about indemnifying them regarding the removal of the underground storage tanks. They have removed that. And originally, the purchase and sale agreement had said an April 1st closing date. They are now requesting that they close on or before April 15. I have put on your table in front of you possible wording for the motion for you to use.
Those are the... How does the date affect taxes? They will be on the tax rolls April 1st. So, we will be able to collect for this year?
We will collect a partial payment at the closing. They will have to pay a few months ahead, because when you pay your taxes in April, you're paying back to January and forward to June. So, they will have to pay a few months forward, picking up, and then they'll be responsible after that to pay the other part of what's left.
So, I make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with Beckett Academy, accepting a payment in lieu of taxes each year for $9,075.
Second. So, Chris has made a motion, but I, I'm not gonna stay at all here. Mike has seconded it to authorize the town manager to do that. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is an abatement for 1033 Main Street.
This is coming to the board from the assessor's agent, Donna Hayes. Apparently, when the building was first assessed, she thought that it had a finished second floor. It does not have a finished second floor. So, the request is to abate the taxes in the amount of $533.61.
So. Second, there's a motion by Tim, second by Harold to approve the abatement to Carl Sprejova for his property on Main Street. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is a $2,500 facade grant request from Tiff Fund for Monmouth Museum. I don't know if Larry said he might be.
Yeah, Larry says his Zoom is not working or Zoom, he's having trouble getting in.
So, this is part of your facade grant program. I did put some of that information back in case anyone was not familiar with it or wanted to refamiliarize themselves with it. But the Monmouth Museum is asking for $2,500 to do some improvements to the building, in front of the building. Free buildings.
Which is half the cost of, of that work. Motion?
I will, we approve the fund grant, facade grant request from, for the Monmouth Museum.
Second.
By Harold, second by Chris to approve the facade grant request of $4,500 for Monmouth Museum. All those in favor?
I abstain.
And the second, next thing is the, a $400 event funding request for Tiff, from Tiff Funds for Monmouth Museum for fellowship projects. But this is something that's been going on for a few years.
Exactly. I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the $400 event funding for the Monmouth Museum fellowship projects.
Second. So, Chris abated motion. Mike has seconded it for the $400 event funding request for Monmouth Museum. All those in favor? Next is the place. A question on the ballot regarding the reuse disposition of the former Monmouth Middle School.
I'd like to make a motion to adjust the question as follows. Change the appropriate, the sum of $500,000 to $1.7 million. Change the not to exceed $200,000 to $1.5 million, and strike the last sentence, which is a note. And I'll explain as we go along.
Could you read the question?
I can read it. Shall the town approve a capital improvement project consisting of the demolition of a former Monmouth Middle School, excluding the 1856 Monmouth Academy, the administration building, and the playground, and including structural repairs to the remaining buildings, engineering and design costs, transaction costs, and other expenses reasonably related thereto, to, to appropriate the Two, to appropriate the sum of one point seven million dollars to fund the project. Three. Authorize the select board to use funds from the sale of. Petrel School and unexpended school maintenance funds to partially fund the appropriation. And authorize the treasurer and chairman of the select board to issue a general obligation securities. Of the town, including temporary notes in anticipation of the sale thereof. In an aggregate principal amount not to exceed. One point five million dollars to fund the balance of the appropriation and delegate. And four, delegate to the treasurer and chair of the select board, the authority and discretion to fix the dates. Maturities, interest rates, denomination, cost for redemption with or without. Premium. Form and other details of said securities, including authority to execute and deliver the securities on behalf of the town.
That's to amend Article thirty-one.
Well, she has it listed as question two here. I don't know what the final article.
Yeah, we don't know what the final article will be until we go through all of them.
But it's listed on this copy that you sent.
Yeah, and now the wording on that has changed based on our bond council's requirement for.
I have the bond council requirement wording.
What Tim read was from our bond council.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Can I just ask a question, Tim? Are you taking out the note?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you have some discussion on this, Tim?
I have quite a bit of discussion, uh. I'm waiting for the chair to open up discussion.
Or, uh, were you reading question on this, we got from the bottom?
I, I read as I modified it. I read it as I modified.
Is question two or three?
Question number two. That's the one that pertains to the, uh. That's the one that retains to the, uh, reuse and disposition of the former Monmouth Middle School.
Before Tim gets started, I gotta bring something up. There is some language changes that should have been incorporated into that of it, Linda.
Yeah, we were, uh, Mike had called me today, thought that the wording on that was a little confusing, that people might think that. Where it says the remaining buildings, plural, might mean that we were putting, uh, structural improvements on not just the eighteen fifty-six portion, but also the administration building, maybe even the playground. So, um. My recommendation is if you want to adopt the language that Tim has just read, changing the remaining buildings to the remaining eighteen fifty-six portion. So it's very clear that those improvements, structural improvements are being made to the eighteen fifty-six portion.
Well, a proper way to do that, since the motion's been made and seconded, is for Mike to offer an amendment to that motion. Have that seconded. We vote on that, amend the amendment to the motion and then we. After we have discussion, vote on the amendment to the motion, then have discussion and vote on the main motion.
I have to. That was, that was just a, uh. Just a change in verbiage. I don't know.
Just, it's just a clarification.
Yeah, that, that was not, I, I wouldn't support that. I don't think it's necessary, so.
Whatever. I don't really have a big issue with, with the one little language change. Doesn't, doesn't change the crux of my motion anyway.
So be it.
So if the rest of the board doesn't wanna go through that procedure, that's fine.
Discussion.
I just, uh, wanted to offer something up before you get too deep into whatever versions that you go into. Having looked at the language that, uh, goes on the treasurer's statement and how confusing that I think that that would be for the voters. I am going to recommend tonight that when it comes to the question on the sidewalks for the Main Street. That we take out all reference to the bond. And just say, uh, and I have some new wording for it, but authorizing the selectman to use. Uh, Main Street tax increment financing funds to fund the sidewalk project. And that way, we take that bond question right out of there. And then when you get into the treasurer's statement, you're only dealing with whatever that final two questions are. I just thought that it just added so much confusion and we know we're gonna be using Tiff Funds anyway. Get the voters to approve using those Tiff Funds for the project and.
Makes perfect sense. Good. So. Discussion.
All right, first of all, um, I did a little research on municipal finances. And MSRA Title thirty dash A, Chapter two twenty-three. Subchapter one, general provisions. And when you get down to fifty-six fifty-two, donation of money. It says the municipal officers may accept a donation of money to the municipality to supplement. A specific appropriation already made. To reduce the tax assessment to endow municipal education foundation pursuant to section fifty-seven twenty-four. And so on, order reduced to permanent debt. So unfortunately, the way I read that, and I think I'm reading it correctly. Is that unless the town has appropriated all the money to do a particular project, you can't do a fundraiser, solicit funds and accept donations for it. Now, we can have our lawyer, you know, verify that, do that, but that's a moot point because I think that. Funding the project right up front, no matter how we finish or appropriating the money to fund the project right up front. No matter how we go forward and do that project. Whether we do it with fundraising or, 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 uh, municipal bonds or independent, uh, loan from, from a bank, which doesn't require us to take and. Use the whole length of the loan. We can pay it off sooner, or we can pay it off in a different rate because of fundraising. Uh, makes more sense. And, and as far as I'm concerned, it's not up to us to make the choices. It's up to us to make sure that the citizens of Monmouth have a choice. And there's been a huge amount of work and public input into the reuse of these properties and buildings. And I don't think that, that, it, it, I think it sets a very bad precedent for the board to ignore the efforts of all the people that have worked on this. And I mean, do we really wanna send a message that? If you're gonna be on a committee, we're just gonna ignore what you come up with? I don't, I don't think that's right. The school reuse task force worked for over two years exploring reuse of these old Monmouth school buildings. Several options were explored. Information was gathered from many sources. To understand the costs involved. Business office use, co-working renovation of all apart, community uses and benefits, sale and other possibilities were discussed. Main state housing was invited in. And walked through the buildings with us and did a very thorough assessment, gave us a lot of ideas and a lot of information. An engineer was, uh, hired to update the two thousand and eight study. Uh, and actually do a whole new study to give us an actual idea of where the buildings stand now. Of what is wrong with them, what needs to be done, what could be done, and what we needed to worry about. That was, that was a key, key, uh, thing to do to find out what's going on over there. Contractors were contacted for estimates for demolition, for renovation, for other things, to give us a real-time idea of costs. As well as others to inspect the buildings. And up-to-date engineering study was done. An estimate for demolition was contained, uh, obtained from a contractor. As, and we, we even got removal costs for the oil storage tank, which included removing the fuel that's in it. Not an easy task, apparently. An architect was, an architect was asked to provide an estimate for services. And he very graciously provided concept drawings as well. Which gave us a lot of ideas and, and showed us what could be, what could happen. Personally, in the beginning, I thought the best thing would be to demolish everything, just turn it into a field and see where we go from there. As, as uses were identified, it became apparent that there would be huge benefit to the town of Monmouth, in my opinion, and the opinion of the. School reuse task force. Uses that were identified, and uses were identified. It was thought out thoroughly, discussed thoroughly, and discussed at great length. One of the uses would be a meeting hall for the select board, planning board, board of appeals, fire department meetings and training, as well as other town groups. With a proper community computer equipment would be a great training and lecture space. As you know, the town office has. Staff has increased and, and we've used up our meeting hall now. It's turned into offices. Rental hall and event hall. The town has virtually no rentable space for events, has no space or place anywhere for, uh, rental. Thompson Hall is, is cumbersome at best because. It's being used a lot, a lot of the year for shows. For musicians, for other things. And I think we should be doing more of that, actually. That's another subject. There are emergency and disaster uses, emergency warming and food station. Uh, shelter. Uh, there's ample, there would be ample room for additional town offices. Ample room for town record storage for the foreseeable future. Uh, commercial kitchen was discussed at great length. Because it would be a business incubator for the town. It would be something that no one else in the area has. Monmouth desperately needs a restaurant. And if we could promote, uh, someone to start their business. By renting a commercial kitchen, kitchen, we might end up with that. Restaurants are notoriously difficult to start. Especially if you don't have a base for customer base that may or may not like your food if you just start now. Voting place. Uh, it's going to be handicapped accessible, which is. A big key to voting nowadays. The RSU could deny use of the gym at any time. And as I understand it, they may do that when the pandemic is over. This might be just a temporary thing for us to be able to use the, the gym. There are many economic development possibilities, and Monmouth has an opportunity here. I think we need to take advantage of it. And the longer that we wait, the worse the conditions of the building would be. The more it will cost to renovate them, not to mention the cost of labor and materials will be going up every year. Every year you wait, probably gonna cost ten percent more for materials, ten percent more for labor. So. Putting a question out there that says. We're gonna spend five hundred thousand now. Uh, to put a roof on it and put, do structural. Uh, renovations to the walls to hold it up and demolish those other building. I don't think that's enough money anyway. And secondly, then with a note that was in the original question here, we're basically telling people. That we're gonna spend at least one point two million dollars instead of one point seven right up front. I think that.
It'd be two point two.
Thank you very much. Two point two instead of one point seven. And. To me, the surest way for people to not wanna build that building or save that building is to tell them it's gonna cost more. And we don't know what we're gonna do and let it languish. I think the people in town, after all the work, deserve to have the choice and have it right up front, and they deserve for us to be honest with them. I think that's most of what I had to say. And I hope you will consider this with the spirit in which all the effort, work was put into it, uh, was done.
Mr. Chairman, as you, as you know, at the last meeting, I, I opposed, uh, I, I was in favor of offering the, the question that was based on the school. Reuse Committee's work and, uh. I have two, uh. The two main issues for me are. Uh, again, everything that Tim just cited, that, you know, that there was thought. Uh, there were uses outlined and, and so on and so forth. The two main things for me were. That, um. The costs were correctly identified. So even in the, 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 the way the second, uh, uh, different question was going to be proposed, or is gonna be proposed. Um, ends with the cost to do the revitalization, revitalization of the building would be approximately one point seven million dollars. So nothing changes with the cost. The only thing that happens is. You add another hundred and some odd thousand dollars, uh, to mothball the building and make the necessary repairs to do that. And then, um. Whatever time someone decides they come up with a reason to actually do the work and, and, uh, the, the costs don't go down, they go up. So, uh, I think that two point two. Five years from now is probably on the low side. Uh, if it takes five years to do it, it's, it's probably pretty much on the low side of what it actually would cost then. So, um. My point of view is that we should offer the voters, uh, uh, a straight up and down choice. Spend the, the money now to do the building now. Revitalize it, put it into use. Or. Demolish the complex. And that, that becomes the voter's choices as to how they wanna spend their money. And, and I know that there was a lot of emotion that's attached to this issue. And there may be some people that are afraid that if we. Put those two choices out there, people will be afraid to send the money, spend the money and they'll vote to demolish the building and that will win when. You know, there's a lot of people that don't want that to happen. And there may be some people that, um, are afraid that it will pass. It, and one point seven million dollars won't be authorized by the voters. And feel that that's more money than the town should spend right now. My contention is and always has been that that is the, uh, decision of the body that, uh, approves appropriations, which are the voters in the town. So, uh, offering them. The choice to make that decision, to me, is the, is the right thing to do. And then the people that mark the ballot know that if they voted to spend the one point seven million, and it is clearly outlined. What the, uh, financial impact to every taxpayer is. And they vote to say, yes, that's what we wanna do, then that's what they've decided they want to do. If the contrary comes through and they say, no, we don't wanna do that, we wanna demolish the whole thing and then find a different use for the land. That'll, nobody's ever happy in these situations. I mean, a hundred percent of people are never happy in these situations. You'll have, uh, percentages that are. Very happy with one outcome and upset at the other. If it didn't come out another way. And then you'll have some people that are just whatever. Uh, but I, I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to offer a, a clear choice, and I think the question before us now does that.
And I will add, if you don't mind, that, uh, appropriate does not mean. Uh. You're gonna fund it with, entirely with a bond. Appropriate means that's what the voters have authorized us to spend. You can spend it in any combination of things you want. Uh, the wording of the question allows you to do that. It allows you to go through other sources instead of the main bond bank, which gives you flexibility and paint it off. Gives you flexibility to shop it around. It also gives you flexibility to accept donations right up front. Because. The, the voting body has appropriated that money. So you can accept donations to reduce the tax impact of that appropriation. If that, the way the question is worded now, where we've finally gotten to, it gives this board incredible flexibility. To, to address the issue up there and how we're gonna fund it.
Mr. Chair, um, yes, number one, uh, there, there is, there's a lot to digest in, in all of this language. But one of the ones that's confusing, and I have spoke with Linda about it, the five hundred thousand dollars, that includes demolition. Of the nineteen fifties and sixties portions. So that five hundred thousand dollars isn't, in essence, just to do the mothball. That's confusing, and I think that should be clear. We're gonna be honest. I think that's something that needs to, to be discussed. Um, those. I, I think the five hundred thousand includes the, the, the full demo of the building. It's not just to do the mothball portion. The moth, right, it's the roof and. And to shore up the ends and keep it weather tight.
The way I took it, Mike, was. It was.
I gotta just interject. I've got the floor and I gotta let me just finish a thought.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. I truly appreciate that. So that's number one. That, number two, I hear Harold, what Harold is saying. And he brings up a good point. The voters get to decide. But if you look at the end of these questions, it says, select board recommends. So everybody here has ownership in that. You just can't punt it to the taxpayer. And say, we've done our due diligence. We're, we're saying we recommend. So people gotta consider that, too. Um, and I am still not convinced that the salesmanship on designated use has convinced me at any level. That we should be putting out a one point seven million dollar bond with hyperbole. That's really what we're looking at. It is all hyperbole. There is, well, we could do this, we could do a kitchen. You think, I don't know, any municipal government that has got into the restaurant industry, and I just think that that's. Not something that we should be getting involved in. So those are my three points.
All right. I, I.
I thought it was, excuse me, Douglas. Go ahead. No, you go right ahead. Oh, I, I couldn't. Unless I could see it right in front of me and, and be able to look at it and think about it a little bit.
Well, it's fine. I'll let you have it.
I just can't.
But I'd, I'd like to point out, if I could. That I thought it was pretty clear that 500,000 dollars was going to cover, was, was thought to cover. Demo, structural. Walls to be put up to save the academy and a roof. And after the demo, which was, what was it, about 270,000 for the other building? You're going to end up with about 230,000. You're going to take 70,000 out of that to do. A roof. I really doubt that foundation and wall repair is going to be able to be done for the ensuing 150,000 or whatever to try to.
There is something for that. There's a line item. For those somewhere. I don't have it with me now.
I, I have the floor, Mr. Minkowski.
Yes, you most certainly do, Tim.
So at the moment, I'd like to move this to Douglas so he may consider it.
I don't know if I can consider it that quickly.
I think it makes a lot of sense. I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
So, Mr. Chairman. To give this careful consideration, I suggest that we have a special meeting next week to just consider this question.
I second that. Your vague emotion.
I'm moving to postpone action on the question until a special meeting for next week.
Thank you. I think that's a great.
There is. But there is a motion already on the floor.
It's okay. A motion to postpone overrides the motion for passage.
Okay, so I'm seconding Harold's motion.
What, what, what would happen next week is that we would meet to just discuss this question. We'd go back into the discussion part of the motion. And then after all the discussion is completed, then we, we vote on the motion.
And I'll say I'm only available Monday next week. And after Monday, I will not be around.
We have those seven days.
I mean, I could always zoom into the meeting. That's the only thing I could do.
You can postpone this until the next regularly scheduled meeting, but we're getting, I have got to send the dollar to the printer the next week. So it doesn't give you any leeway after that.
I'm, I'm going to not be back.
Will you be at our next meeting?
You won't be here on the 7th, right?
Because I won't be back until the state until the. Night of the eighth.
Can you zoom in?
I can zoom in. I mean, I can always zoom in to the meeting. If you do something next Wednesday night or on the 31st, I'll be situated. I can zoom in and participate.
That would have to be Wednesday because we have to give seven days public notice for the meeting, so.
I mean, I can, I can definitely do that. I don't want to miss out.
Well, we wouldn't want you to miss out.
So we're still talking about the 31st special meeting or you'll zoom in?
And I'll just zoom in.
It's six o'clock. You're at East Coast.
I'm, I'm still on the East Coast and I, I, it should be fine.
Miss, if you want to have it in summer, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, that's better.
That might be, you know, a better option, I think.
It's not going to be a long agenda.
No, it'll just be that. So, you know, we could say. I can't remember what time my flight lands right now. So, and to be fair, I need to. I wanted you to know that I, if we're having a special meeting, I'm not going to be there, but. I'm trying to remember. And I think that'll be fine if we do six o'clock because I think it's early in the early afternoon.
Why don't we leave it that we'll post, postpone this to a special meeting next Wednesday night and we will set the time after I talk to Christian.
Is that going to work for you?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm really happy to do that.
There's no legal issues with her zoom.
No, we're still under an executive order that allows you to participate in Zooms and we're good.
I'll just zoom into that. That's fine.
So the motion by Harold. A second by Mike to postpone this until the special meeting. Next Wednesday. All those in favor? Thank you.
Special meeting on the 31st.
Oh, so the next. Item on the agenda is to accept easement deeds from an authorizing payment to Brian and Jennifer Wood. For property they own on 10 and 16 Beach Road.
We have three easements that are necessary to do the sidewalk project on beach, which is part of the larger project for North Main Street, Maple. And Beach. And I have broken these into two separate items so that Tim can recuse himself and step away from the table while we vote on his. And he can stay here and vote on the one for Jennifer and Brian Wood. Those are two separate easements, but you can take them together. We had the property appraised by Mr. Buckland, who has done the appraisals for us in the past. And came back with the recommended amounts that you have in front of you this evening. And all three have accepted those amounts. I have the signed easement deeds in my office. And so we're ready to file them once you have accepted them and authorized payment to the individuals. So this one is just for the Woods.
So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion accepting the easement deeds from an authorizing, authorizing payment to Brian and Jennifer Wood for 10 and 16 Beach Road.
Second. So it's a motion by Chris, a second by Harold to approve the accepting easement deeds. From an authorizing payment to Brian and Jennifer Wood. All those in favor? And the next agenda item is to accept the easement deed from an authorizing payment to Timothy McDonald for property. On 4 Beach Road.
If I might just clarify that, I am going to abstain from any discussion on this or any motion. But the payment's not to me. The payment is to T Mac and Son LLC, of which they're our other partner.
You should step away, Tim. So there's no question.
I'll make a motion that we accept the easement deed from an authorized payment to Timothy to T Mac. And Sons. For 4 Beach Road.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion by Harold, second by Chris to. Approve accepting an easement deed from an authorizing payment to T Mac. For the property on Beach Road. All those in favor? And Tim has abstained.
Thank you.
The next item is warrant number 20.
Checks over $1,000 allied equipment. This is for blade carbide wing for Public Works. $3,428. First, insurance, sorry, we Nelson. This is our monthly container fee and plus a small bill for questions for our tip attorney. $1,118.66 Blue Rock Rockworks Incorporated excavation trips, gravel, $3,461. Central Main Power. This is our electric bills for several of our buildings. $1,979.93. Cockney Warden Trail Blazers. This is an annual appropriation that we make to the Trail Blazers for snowmobiles. Trails, $2,257.42. Dennis Kate Burke Incorporated. This is fuel for Public Works. $1,233.52. Baby and oil heating fuel for Compton Hall and the Town Office. $1,384.43. Gremel Industries oversized bulk waste. $1,457.60. Other International Fire Department Accident Policy. $1,402.39. Main Equalization. This is our assessing fees. $2,287.50. Main Waste to Energy Solid Waste Services. $2,696.16. Monmouth Water Association for our water bills. $1,612.98. Treasurer State of Maine for taxes, plates, titles. $7,132.45 and for inland fisheries and wildlife. $4,721.50. And Wright Pierce, our engineers on the Wilson Pond Road Culvert Project. $4,536.66.
Will you refresh my memory on the. $1,900 charge to. The $1,900 payment to the RSU for fuel for the trucks.
Oh, that's a mistake. It should have been taken off of there. I caught that today when I was signing the checks. Angela had misunderstood that process. She now knows that we're actually sending them a bill for the 1900s.
Okay, that's what I thought it should be.
It didn't get taken off the warrant, but no, we're not sending them a check.
So when we make a mistake on the warrant there and we approve it, how do we fix that?
Just put an X through it and it's fine. I can initial it as the treasurer. I can assure you the check has been canceled.
And even if it had been sent, we would get it back. So it's not like it's, you know, a rule that won't bend.
Make a motion to accept warrant number 20.
Second. There's a motion by Chris, second by Harold to approve warrant number 20 with the.
Removal of the.
Removal of that particular item.
All those in favor? Thank you. And next is a budget wrap up.
Okay, I've, my hope tonight is that we're able to go through the questions, make sure that you're all the questions that have been added to the warrant. Also, we have some outstanding issues that were left over through the process, mostly from the last meeting. Rather than go through the questions first, which I was going to do since Mr. Burnham is here on the North Monmouth Beach topic. I've listed a couple pending items under here. At the last meeting, there was a discussion about not funding lifeguards at the North Monmouth Beach. For the summer when Mr. Fletcher was here and presented his budget. So that is remaining to be decided this evening by the select board. So that's one of the items I thought we'd bring that up first. So Mr. Burnham doesn't have to say it the whole rest of the meeting.
Empty that owns the North Monmouth Beach. So this is the first edit that I heard about the lifeguard situation. Last year, we didn't have lifeguards because of COVID and we, we all established it and I. You know, if that's the only pending issue with the North Monmouth Beach, I'm okay with that. I would like to see it continually funded, operated as it has been voted on in 2016 by the voters. Going forward. So just curious what the board's thoughts are on that.
So, so just to be clear, you're saying you, you, you're okay with no lifeguard presence at the North Monmouth Beach and it continued to be open to the public?
If, if we can continue to do the rest of the maintenance and funding as, as been.
And what would that be?
That would be the portable toilet. A portion of the insurance and grounds upkeep. Basically, you probably don't have the agreement in front of you.
And how much is that amongst them?
I don't know what the budget is now, Tim. Originally, it was voted on in the. 2016 appropriately. 87.45.
Yeah, I think last year was only like 3,000 bucks.
Yeah, I want to say it was 3,500, 3,800. And I think the better portion, portion of that was the lifeguards. I want to say it was probably $2,000. This hasn't been reviewed in a few years.
So, so you're just, which I, I would agree, we, minimum, we should, if we're going to do this, the minimum we should do is provide a porta potty and, and. And some grounds clean up.
Right. The, the public works have been taking care of the facility from May through September. That was.
And I can attest to the fact that there have been a number of people on social media and who have called me. And, and said that they do like going to the North Monmouth Beach. It is lightly used, but. It's closer to them where they live in North Monmouth than to go there than, than to come downtown.
And I will make one other point that, you know, the board should know in 2016 voted on three to one that the townspeople did want lifeguard there. So keep that in mind going forward. There may be a little pushback in regards to that.
And if I can just add, I did touch base with Joe Fletcher again today too, to find out exactly what his issues were. He said, the, the use of that beach does not warrant more than one lifeguard, paying more than one lifeguard to be there. However, having only one lifeguard there makes it hard for them to get lifeguards for that location because no one wants to be up there by themselves. So it's a struggle for him to staff the lifeguards who are running there.
You know, my other thought with that is, would it be possible to offer that position as a stipend? To somebody to take it on for the summer as. The resident lifeguard.
The, the bigger issue is the, the. The safety and security of the person who's performing that duty. And that's what Joe's main concern is. But if you put. A, a young person, it's going to be a young person. Up there by themselves. And, and they get in a bad situation and there's nobody there to either help them or to call for assistance. Not saying that that would ever happen. We hope it wouldn't, but you just don't know. And that's a pretty shallow area. I mean.
It is, it is. I mean, the original discussion on it was to have a lifeguard there, just sort of. More of a policing of it to say, to keep kids under control and have a presence of somebody here, similar to on the center.
So I comment back to that would be that parents have a responsibility to do that.
Yes, they do.
And. It's a different situation with the, with the center beach because there's more activity there. Including the swimming lessons and.
And supervisor.
Yes, and boat ramp. And so there's a lot of, you know, the basketball, there's a lot of traffic there. So. Personally, I have, would have no issue with. Maintaining the funding to maintain the porta potty and, and police up the grounds. But I, I agree with Joe that it doesn't warrant two lifeguards and one lifeguard is just not a safe situation, especially where it's, it's kind of located out of the way.
Right.
I, well, I'm surprised he can't get somebody there because I know from my experience with the beach residents. That there are, there are kids who'd like, who'd like that situation to go up there and. And they have cell phones. I don't see any problem calling that whatever, calling the police. They do it at the town beach, the same thing. Need the police, so I don't see. In all the years of experience that I know about. I think it's okay to have one lifeguard there for part of the day when it might be most busy and.
Right. And that's what we tried to do in the past. And it had been adjusted from, we started six hours, four hours. And it was down to two or three days a week. It was also shut up so that it was weather pending. And that also is definitely a focus to make the decision on. I'll stand aside. You know what, we can continue to at least keep it open and have a. So opportunity for the young people in North Monmouth.
Yes.
And Monmouth.
So I, I, I think. I mean, Joe did make the comment that it's hard to get people that want to go up there, but he also, his main concern, which I share, is. The security, the safety of whatever person does say that they'll go up there. And society is just not what it was 50 years ago, 20 years ago. It's different. Thankfully, our small town has been spared a lot of what is different that's not good. But. I just, I personally don't feel comfortable putting a, a young person by themselves. And yes, they have a cell phone, but my point in the previous comment that I made, which I will make more clear now. Is if they're, I said, if they get in a, in a, in a situation, if they are assaulted. And yes, they have a cell phone, but my point in the previous comment that I made, which I will make more clear now, is if they're, I said, if they get in a, a, in a, in a situation, if they are assaulted, they are not going to be able to use their cell phone because they're going to be busy either defending themselves or being hurt. So that's why a second person's necessary to, to provide that, uh, level of, of, uh, safety. At least that person has a chance to, to, uh, to make a call or to intervene. People are less likely to do things they shouldn't do when there's more than one person to deal with. Now, if you're talking about, you know, putting a, uh, seventeen year old football player, weightlifter, uh, black belt in karate up there to be the lifeguard, I'd have less concern. Uh, but if you're talking about a fifteen or sixteen year old young lady to go up there all by herself, then I'd have greater concern. And I think that I, I want to speak to Joe, but I think that factors into his thinking.
So I think it probably would be best to have a male. And, and, and again, from what I know, uh, it, it's an older person goes, not, not usually a kid, uh, actually.
Then, I mean, if that would be my suggestion, not knowing who they're going to have from year to year as lifeguards, um, if it is an older person that lifeguard, you know, a teacher that has the summers off or things like that. I think it would be, you know, to consider that, but I, I definitely think having an opportunity for a kid to ride to a beach like I did my whole life and not cross two oh two is a good thing.
And there wasn't a lifeguard there, was there, when you were a kid?
Um, no, and I was the lifeguard at one point in the center of town. So, and I was.
Well, I mean, up, up there.
No, I've never ever set foot on that beach. So I have never set foot on that beach. When you live a half a mile from Cottonawang and you ride your bicycle to Cottonawang three times a day. So I had no reason to go to North Monmouth. But, um, but that's why it's important, you know, for me, I think, for, for kids that are in North Monmouth and definitely I don't want those kids crossing two oh two. And I'm sure they don't want to cross two oh two. But if there's a way to, you know, be able to maintain the beach being open, I think it's important.
So is, is this a secure staffing issue or is this a funding mechanism? Can we, can we get two people to go and just say, yeah, we gotta add a little bit more or they have enough money? And then it's just that select times is obviously not going to be all the time.
Well, the feeling has been that it doesn't, there's not enough people there to warrant two people being there, to pay two people.
Not even during the peak hours?
No.
Or Friday, Saturday.
Hey, on a peak today, you might have ten or twelve.
That's it.
Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, it, it gets a lot of.
Sometimes it's more sporadic.
So, and evening use is when you're not gonna have a lifeguard.
Exactly. There's no lifeguard in the center after a certain time, but if it was Friday, Saturday or something like that, you know, Friday, Saturday, when you see those higher usage, um, because I assume that the center beach, I don't know, I don't go up there as much anymore, but on Saturdays, there's a lifeguard there. I assume on Sundays, there's a lifeguard at the center beach, isn't there?
Fixing.
So, you know, those to me would make sense that it would be a busier, the busier days on the weekends. So if there was.
Yeah, I thought they staffed the center beach till eight P M. on the weekend.
It was something at night.
I, I thought they did.
From June to August.
Yeah, something like that.
Yes, Linda.
I, there's no way that we can guarantee that we're going to be able to get an older person.
That's right.
Or someone who's brawny, male or female, to be able to, you know, take care of themselves. But there, there is no way that we can promise what we can put up there or who we can put up there. But, you know, if the select board wants us to hire or attempt to hire, keep in mind that if, if Joe can't find, or Lisa can't find lifeguards, you know, they're gonna go to the center beach because that's where the, the biggest crowds are.
And, and with all of that said, I, I again, I reaffirm that I, I want to see the, uh, beach left open. And I think that the most prudent way to do that at this point is to agree to place a porta potty there and agree to police up the ground and, and not agree to place a lifeguard. Now, that doesn't mean that if Joe has an abundance of lifeguards and finds that on a busy time, he can, doesn't need one down there and he can send them to North Monmouth, that doesn't prohibit him from doing that.
So can we just fund it as if that might happen and there would be the funding in that for that line to take care of it? And if you can't, well, we, we've done the best we could to offer that.
Yeah.
Yes.
So leave the funding the way it is at the moment.
I'd, I'd like to. If you can, that'd be great.
Yeah, how much should we, what, what, how much difference was that?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
I, I think the total funding right now is thirty five hundred.
It's not a lot of money, you know.
So, okay, that's, then that's fine. I just don't, I just don't want to bind this to have committee to having a lifeguard there if we don't have the resources to do it.
Yes.
Especially since the rec committee has, uh, you know, that's, that's, they've struggled with that. That's been their recommendation not to do it because they're, they're having difficulties with it.
So this gives them the flexibility to do it if they can, but they're not required to do it. So if, I would, if it doesn't shake up, we can, that would just be a carry forward. You can reassess next year.
Yeah, that, exactly. So that being said, I would like to see the lease that we have currently just be re-adopted again. It's renewed.
I can bring that forward with another agenda. Yeah, yeah.
The, uh, according to our budget, uh, it's, uh, thirty eight hundred.
Thirty eight.
Labor, insurance, all of them.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item was, you had two new requests at the last meeting, um, from the children's center and also the sexual assault crisis and support center. There were some questions at the meeting as to what those two groups did. I included their letters of, um, requests in your packet for the meeting. So hopefully you were able to look at those. Just need you to let me know if you do want to add them under special projects or if you feel that you're already funding more or as much as you can afford to fund. Totally up to you.
Well, I'll say the same thing I do every year. I would just assume fund them because they're local and not fund the Red Cross because their overhead is more than twenty five percent. And I, I think that anything we fund, the overhead should be less than twenty.
So, so what do we, what, what do we, is it Red Cross that we would cut to support them?
That's what I'm saying.
Does anybody else have something they would like to cut to support this?
What's the amount to the Red Cross?
Red Cross is five hundred dollars.
And what's the amount for the two new requests?
One is two thousand sixty four dollars and fifty cents and the other one is one thousand four hundred thirty six dollars seventy five cents.
Linda, those are very specific numbers. Is that something that's been funded before at a percentage?
These are brand new requests. That's why we didn't automatically add them into the list.
And I think, I think the numbers are based on population in the town.
Yeah. The children's center is just based on the population of Monmouth. Yep.
So it's a request, but if we're backing out five hundred, could we do two fifty to each and just make it a wash?
I don't think we can, we, the Red Cross, that they may, according to Tim, uh, you know, spend a lot for, uh, whatever administration or something, but they're, they're the ones who are there when there's something bad happening. So, uh, you know, five hundred dollars for them is, yeah.
I think Chief Roy would attest to that too. And we have, you know, I, I've made those calls through my career and they've always been really great to work with. I do agree with Tim that it's like, uh, some of the other organizations, they get a kind of a hefty, uh, administrat- administrative side, but the services that they pro- provide are well worth it to the town for structured buyers and displaced families and that kind of thing. And Dan wants to speak up to it.
So my only thing that I have continuing, or have always had a concern with is having the taxpayers fund charities through their tax appropriation. I, I just think as a principle, that's not a good principle, but we, the town has done, that's fine. As far as the organization, I, I just got my renewal for my Red Cross, uh, first aid CPR AED certification, two-year certification in that. They, I mean, they, they spend a lot of money in, in gathering up the materials, making the videos, making people available for training and so forth. Uh, so to Mike's point, they, uh, there is some overhead involved with their organization, but they also provide a service for it.
But you know, you, I mean, if you decide that you want to fund these two additional requests, you don't have to fund them at the level that they requested. You can offer something different back. If that's the way you want to go.
So what did they request?
Um, the children's center asked for two thousand sixty four dollars and fifty cents and the sexual crisis center asked for one thousand four hundred thirty six dollars seventy five cents.
I thought we did the sexual, I thought we did that crisis center in the past, but not at that level.
You have a family crisis center, but.
Family, okay, thank you.
Family violence project.
That's what it was.
Are we still giving to them?
Yes. Yes, they get a thousand dollars.
And the problem becomes that there are multitudes of deserving charities out there and we can't donate to all of them. Yeah. I mean, we can't ask the taxpayers. We can donate to them. And taxpayer, individual taxpayers can decide which ones they think are worthy and they can donate to them. It's just, tell, you know, say, you know, if you approve this warrant, then you're donating to the charities we've selected.
Where these are, where these are new, um, requests, I, I'm not supportive of it at this point in time, where we already have some of them, you know, given, it's, you know, this is just, we have to keep a lid on it. It sounds like we're posturing pretty well for, um, what we're doing for charity.
And how, how much is the budget for that now?
What for special?
I mean, for the, yeah, for the whole.
The total is twenty three thousand six hundred eighty five dollars.
That's so, quite a bit, yeah. Can you go through the list for us of the ones what we do, please?
Uh, American Red Cross, five hundred. Uh, the cemetery is in here. That's, uh, ten thousand. Crisis and counseling centers. So there's another one, a thousand dollars. Compton Price Fund, two hundred. Uh, KV CAP Transportation, six fifty. Family Violence Project, one thousand. Memorial Day Services, seven hundred. Community Health and Counseling, they only ask for thirty dollars this year. We're not sure why they only ask thirty, but that's all they ask for. Uh, Senior Spectrum, two thousand three hundred fifty five dollars. The Food Bank, a hundred fifty dollars. Our Cam gets fifty five hundred dollars. Tri-County Mental Health, two hundred fifty dollars. Uh, Main Public Broadcasting, a hundred dollars. Main General Hospice Volunteers, five hundred dollars. Kennebec Behavioral Health, two fifty, and Lifeflight, five hundred dollars.
Just for the board's information, I will point out that Our Cam does also get, uh, feeding assistance money from a separate fundraiser that, uh, actually Herb Widdinger does with the golf, uh, course and, and, uh, a few other places. And that, that account is very well funded, but in, and administered by the town, but it's separate from, from town finances.
Is Lifeflight a contract for, for service or is that just, they're just looking for donation?
It's just a contribution.
Alliance donates to Lifeflight too. They, they ask us every year for a donation.
So is everyone in the same place with the two new requests? Yeah.
Yes.
No? Okay. Okay, so that brings us down to the unclassified and the, uh, request for an additional five thousand dollars for milfoil. You had asked me to reach out and I did to Tamara at the, uh, Cobsey Watershed and asked what the results were of the, uh, treatment that was done. And she said, I sent that to you. So this is basically a five thousand dollar increase. We are already giving five hundred dollars to, um, Veritable Leaf Milfoil and Annabessco Lake. This is five thousand dollars would be to Friends of the Cobsey Watershed, uh, but it's also for Annabessco Lake.
I think as a matter of public interest, we should point out the results of what was said on, on the question of the treatment on, on Annabessco. And as I understand it, uh, because the spring hasn't sprung yet, so to speak, uh, they don't really know the effectiveness of it, but the initial indications were that it was very effective and there was a lot of die off of the, of the milfoil, the invasive milfoil that was in the, in the lake.
So the, we, I, I'm not inclined to ask the taxpayers to donate five thousand dollars to the Friends of the Cobsey Watershed. Again, that's a, that's a, uh, a, uh, private organization that does good work. And I, I was a member for a long time and made private donations to that, to that group and they, they did good things, but it's it's, uh, it's, it's getting one of those things where if people want to donate to that cause, they can donate to the Friends of the Cobsey Watershed. They send the mailer out. People would want to spend money that way. And it's a worthy cause, could do that. But I, I just, uh, am not inclined to add that as an appropriation line.
Linda, do these treatments, is that something that has to happen every year?
I do not know.
Well, it's not, that was the first time and it was the result of, um, three or four or five years of mechanical removal, like, like that was funded by the DEP with divers and such. And, and that proved ineffective. So then they went forward to do this treatment. It, it, as far as I know, it's, it's a one-time thing for now, just to see how effective it would be. Uh, they have done this in other lakes, uh, because I, I talked to Bill Monago about it. And it's been effective, but I, you know, again, what I believe that they'll do is they'll reassess this summer, see what the growth rate is or whatnot, and then go from there.
And they still continue to do some mechanical diving to this, that, that situation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Hey, it's, thank you. It's Ken Ackley and, uh, I, I, I want to compliment Tim on his description of what the friends have been doing. Uh, I think it's important to note that the funding for about, uh, seventy five percent of the cost of the milfoil, uh, herbicide treatment as well as the scuba divers is private funding. It's not public funding. Uh, the, uh, through grants and, uh, and other types of fundraisers, the friends have been able to raise, uh, at this point, I think we're looking at, um, well, last year, uh, the cost of the herbicide treatment was approximately eighty thousand dollars. Um, the town of Winthrop was gracious enough to contribute five thousand dollars. Um, the Lake Association itself, um, had, uh, made substantial contributions, both from Cobsey as well as Annabessco. And, and I understand, um, I understand Harold's point about it being a charity, uh, and doing good work. But the fact of the matter is, uh, the Friends of the Cobsey Watershed are protecting the tax base of the town of Monmouth. Uh, if you go to Lake Arrowhead in Maine, um, you will see a milfoil infested lake whose, uh, property values have gone down about forty percent. And, um, and whose property owners have asked the town for abatements. And so I, I, I hear Harold that this is a charitable cause, but there is also a component here that is, uh, directly impacting the finances of the town. And that, uh, the financial interests of, of the town, uh, are certainly aligned with what the Friends of the Cobsey Watershed are trying to do. And so it was disappointing last year that the town of Monmouth decided not to participate in the eighty thousand dollar, uh, herbicide treatment. I think this request is for a follow-up to that. Tim is correct. This is the first time in Maine that an herbicide treatment has been allowed uh, for a full, fully infested lake. Um, they've used herbicides in very limited fashion in other lakes in Maine, but this is the first time DEP is allowed uh, this, uh, application throughout a lake. And, um, you know, the, the urgency for, uh, for getting that done, uh, was because we are seeing milfoil, uh, starting to show up in Cobsey now. So it has migrated downstream from, starting in the Wilson. from, starting in the Wilson Stream Delta, across the lake, down the Jug Stream and now is in Cobsey. This year, for the first time, they had sent scuba divers into the Jug Stream on the Cobsey side of the dam. And that added to the sense of urgency that DEP had to allow Annabessacook a, a, a much larger option for, for trying to mitigate milfoil. Because it's clear that just scuba divers alone are not going to be able to get their arms around keeping the milfoil infestation in Annabessacook under control. So, so my point is this, and Tim is correct, this is a one-time thing, but part of the plan for the herbicide treatment was the possibility of a follow-up treatment, a spot treatment this year. And I think that's what you're seeing this request come through, is asking for a contribution for a potential spot treatment this year. Of course, we are not going to know until June or July exactly how effective last year's treatment was. And DEP would allow us one more bite at the apple, probably be the last bite at the apple, because this is not something they want to use as a regular mitigation technique. But nonetheless, I think the request for $5,000 is certainly a good investment for the town of Monmouth when you look at the potential impact to the property valuations and the potential abatements that property owners could come to the town with because their values have gone down as a result of being overrun by milfoil.
Mr. Chairman, I, I view a lot of that as a scare tactic. I know it's not meant that way, but I've heard a lot of that, various bodies of water, because they've been deeply involved in this issue for 20-plus years. And I've been on Arrow, Arrowhead Lake. It's an entirely different aquatic structure than Annabessacook. It's more subject to, to what the problems that they have because of the, and I don't want to go into all the technicalities of why it's more prone to, to that. But, you know, there's been milfoil for decades in Pleasant Pond and Cobsey Stream. And it hasn't engulfed Pleasant Pond and Cobsey Stream and destroyed all the property values because there's only certain places it can grow. So discount that it is an issue. I'm just saying that it's an issue that if people of the town want to feel strongly about and want to donate to, I encourage them to donate to the Friends. It's a good organization and, and it's doing good work. And I would encourage the people of the town of their own flesh and to donate to the Friends of the Cobsey Watershed for these projects. I just don't feel comfortable asking for it as an appropriation.
Oh, Mr. Ackley. Kent?
Kent? Yes.
As a former representative, do you have any idea where the state is on the boat launch for, in Winthrop for the, for Annabessacook?
Sure. For those of you who are on Facebook, you might have noticed this past week, actually, a preliminary plan was published on the Annabessacook Lake Improvement Association website or Facebook page. After numerous meetings with the Lake Association, the Cobsey Watershed, the Friends of the Cobsey Watershed, a bunch of snowmobile clubs, we have what seems to be a, a design that's pretty close to final. And we are looking at inland fisheries and wildlife applying for permits both through DEP as well as the town of Winthrop to move forward. I would imagine that those permits are going to take a little time. Of course, after the permits are done, then we're expecting some time to put the project out to bid. Tentatively, we're looking at a construction period that would be sometime early next year. In the meantime, it's important to note for anyone who wants public access to Annabessacook, our neighborly agreement with the Augusta West Campground continues. It's been super busy down there for them. They have been most gracious at hosting the public for allowing boat launching for free. And, yeah, it's important to, for everyone to know that that is between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. They have committed to doing that this year and as long as there's a light at the end of the tunnel next year as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Here's, the boat launch question actually reminded me of something. I'd like, Linda, to put on the list of possible CIP projects, the East Monmouth Boat Launch to Annabessacook Improvements. It's something I've discussed many times in the past. And if there are two boat launches to the same lake, inland fisheries and wildlife will actually stock that lake and give, put more effort into maintaining it.
Yeah, Tim, so that's correct, they'll, they'll potentially stock it as well as potentially put navigation buoys out and keep them maintained.
Right.
So, but I think, I think Tim is correct that we've got to have something more than just a sign and a gravel ramp in order to justify, in order for us to call the, the Jug Stream Boat Launch a real boat launch.
Exactly. And it can't go straight down like it does now.
Yeah, we might talk with the watershed folks about how we can straighten out the erosion control issues that are down there. And there's also, there's also quite a lot of potential there for access to the Cobsey side of the dam as well. So that could actually be sort of a two-for-boat launch that people could access both Annabessacook and Cobsey, depending on how you lay it out.
So that was on my list of things, like the Wagon Road Bridge, the, you know, made it to a real bridge. Well, I had the, the East Monmouth Boat Launch too.
So on the $5,000 milfoil, where are we?
So I'm opposed to it.
I'm in favor of it. So would you want to do a motion?
You don't need a motion.
Nobody's made a motion, yeah.
You don't need one.
So, so the three, three of us have made our positions plain, Mike and I are opposed to funding it. And now, so you're, you're in favor of it? We need one more person to commit to one or the other or?
It's too important to our, to the economy and too important to the, you know, the people who live on that lake.
Well, I actually thought that the funding request was for additional milfoil inspections. Not, not for the herbicide treatment follow-up.
It's to try and do something to reduce that invasive milfoil.
This is $5,000 to the Friends of Cobsey Watershed to support the removal of invasive variable leaf water milfoil from Annabessacook Lake.
Is there still an appropriation in there for the inspections?
There, I'll tell you what all is in here. There's $1,500 to the Annabessacook Lake Improvement Association. A thousand of that is support courtesy boat inspections at the boat launch at Augusta West Campground. And $500 to support plant survey efforts of invasive variable leaf milfoil and Annabessacook Lake. $1,500 to Friends of the Cobsey Watershed to support courtesy boat inspections at Cockney Wagon. And then there's this $5,000 increase. $1,650 to Cobsey Yacht Club Lake Association to support courtesy boat inspections at the Monmouth Public Boat Launch on Cobsey Lake. $750 to the Tacoma Lakes Association to support courtesy boat inspections at the Woodbury Pond Public Boat Launch. And $250 to Berry Dexter Wilson Watershed Association to support courtesy boat inspections at the Wilson Pond Public Boat Launch on Wilson Pond.
So we'd still be doing all those things if we say no to the $5,000 boat?
Yes.
Yes.
I have no opinion at the moment, so.
I think, one, from my opinion is that Monmouth is defined by its lakes. We're virtually an island. No matter what direction you turn in Monmouth, there's water, we're surrounded. And as we know, the milfoil moves through those same channels that the water moves through. That's how it's getting from Annabessacook to Jug or by boat, you know. And I do think that the, the town's use of our lakes is extremely important to keep them as healthy as possible. I mean, the, the amount of money and time we've spent treating Cockney Wagon for turning over, we'd also want to prevent it from having milfoil in it and my, my leaning is to supporting the money to go to the, that's, that's my leaning.
So is that two and two right now?
It's two and two.
Put it on there.
Okay, that's a yes. Okay, I'm going to quickly go through the questions. I'm not reading them all to you, I just want to make sure that everything that I've done in here is okay with everyone. So, and I sent you a new warrant to use. So we start with the $10,000 fund for senior citizens' property tax assistance program, I'm assuming that's all good?
Yep.
The general taxation for general administration, that includes administration assessing elected officials' employee benefits, general assistance, risk management, town clerk, town meeting, treasurer, unclassified, which we just went through, boards and committees, code enforcement, the town office, for a total of $1,058,771.81, any issues? $72,765 for public utilities, streetlights and hydrants. Compton Prize $200 and $23,485 for the projects and the special projects that I just went through, the cemetery, Compton Prize, KV Cap, everything you just went through. And we did not fund the two additionals. General taxation for CIP, this is coming out of the operating budget, Compton Hall repairs, fire equipment, police cruiser, online tax payments and permitting software, meeting and streaming equipment, we put $5,000 in there, so that's down from the $7,500 we thought it would be. Any issues with that? $57,060 for ambulance service. $393,244 for law enforcement and police protection, which includes animal control. $132,060 for fire protection. $63,474.46 for public safety dispatching. $89,769 for Compton Hall operating expenses. $80,554 for the library. $101,765 for parks and recreation. $180,208 for Public Works, which includes highway and transfer station. $43,098 for building maintenance. $346,890.85 for debt retirement and debt service. And now I've added, shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a three-year lease agreement for the purchase of Snow Cloud for the Public Works Department? Annual payments anticipated at $55,000 per year.
Excuse me, was that a wheeler? That wasn't that the bigger truck they wanted this, this time?
This time, yes.
Yeah.
And another article I added, shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a three-year lease agreement for the purchase of mini excavator and trailer for the Public Works Department? Annual payments anticipated $25,000 per year. And I know that when we talked about these two items last meeting, Harold, you mentioned that come year after next, we may be looking at some cuts somewhere, but I also remembered, I had a note on my desk, that we're getting $95,000 from the state DEP that we're going to be able to refinance the Wilson Pond Road cover project. So that will show up, not next year, but the year after, so we'll be able to offset some of those payments as well.
And one thing I'd like to add, again, is initially I was not thrilled about buying the excavator, but I, on thought and research and talking to a number of people and Keith and others, I think that it will be very helpful, especially if we can use that and instigate a plan to build up the base and put in drainage and culverting things in these dirt roads to stop a lot of this fall and spring mess.
Thank you. Okay, this is appropriating monies from snowmobile registration for this, we passed earlier this evening. Take $6 per registration to do the trails. Receiving taxes from tax club members after the payment due date without interest. Shall the town authorize Board of Selectmen to appropriate an estimated, estimated $344,514.35 for municipal revenue sharing and $1,086,319 of 2021 non-property tax revenue, which includes $75,000 unappropriated surplus to reduce the tax commitment. Again, I checked the website today, the revenue sharing is not updated yet. So I'm going with a conservative amount that we would have received last year, not this year even. Shall the town vote to require one half of taxes? This is basically your regular, when the taxes are due, we adjusted the dates to follow in workdays. And we've adjusted the interest rate on late payments to 5% as you all came up with. Okay. Selling, this is a standard question, allowing the selectmen to sell tax-acquired property, that's pretty standard every year.
Excuse me, speaking of which, are we going to get a list of tax-acquired property anytime soon?
We are, I want you to get past the warrant and then I want to, we're going to have our attorney present at that meeting so that we can talk about our legal rights and duties as well. We will have a complete list. Let's see where. Allows you to make municipal expenditures based on the latest approved municipal budget. That's a standard question. And this was a new question. This is going to allow you to accept money and make expenditures whenever you are given money, donations, grants, the money coming from the feds for the COVID relief, all of that, when it's specified what that money is for. So shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept and expend or utilize for its intended purpose on behalf of the town, any grants or funds awarded or paid to the town by any state or federal agency, grant or other monetary donation from any other public or private entity, organization or individual, and any gift of personal property? This includes the authority to apply for such grants, funds or donations where an application is required or take any other action thereon. This is also going to allow you to take, you know, anytime, we will al, always continue to have it on the agenda for you to accept it because that makes it transparent to the public, that this will authorize you to spend it. That would mean that if you do a fundraiser, depending on what happens with the school, you'll be able to spend those funds. Because you can, you can do a fundraiser for an approved project, but without voter approval, you can't spend the money. So what good is it? This will cover that.
Linda, is, is this something that's going to have to hit the warrant every year? Or is this a opportunity?
Yes, yes, yeah. So you're going to, you'll get used to seeing the same with the next one. Shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of surplus equipment and property through sale or donation? And said items ran into this one when we inherited the two schools and we had all the furniture and we wanted to either sell it or give it away. We didn't have anything that gave us the authority to do that and the attorney said you need to put that in the warrant. This will do that. If this passes, I'll be coming back to you and asking if it's okay to donate those deaths that we loaned out to some families when we went, when they went to some of the virtual classes.
And I would certainly be in favor of that.
Yeah. The next one doesn't have an article number. Needs one. This is the question that you approved sending to the ballot that will allow, will take out the deadline in the section about planning board applications and then it will allow the select board to set the timeframe for when planning board applications are approved. I'll come back to you after June and I'll come back to you after June and we'll set up some kind of deadline for those. Um, the next one, I don't know what we're going to end up with from funds for Cottrell, but this will allow us to set up a building fund from the sale proceeds from the Cottrell Elementary School and any annual money set aside from the sale of property to be used for future building needs of the town. So you may sell some properties and decide that you want to put it into this building fund for future building needs. This one, the attorney is still looking at to make sure that I worded it properly. The next one is from our TIF attorney. Shall the town vote to appropriate tax increment financing revenues to the development program fund for the tax increment financing district? And authorize the board of selectmen to expend funds from the development program fund to be used for purposes based on the district's development program and statutory requirements. D E C D is really tightening up now on what the select boards and the councils are able to do. And so Shauna is telling us that this will cover you. So that when you want to hire an economic development director or you want to spend funds to do various projects, as long as it is within the guidelines of our TIF district will be available. And we'll put that one on every year as well. I have changed the wording on the sidewalk project, so it no longer will contain a bond component. And it will just say, shall the town approve a capital improvement project consisting of the construction and reconstruction of sidewalks in the downtown area of Main Street? Including engineering and design costs, transaction costs and other expenses reasonably related there too. And appropriate the sum of four hundred thirty seven thousand dollars to fund the project using funds from the Main Street Tax Increment Finance District. And that will allow you to just pay for that project straight out of TIF. Shauna has already given up her blessing. We won't have that bond question confusing whatever you end up putting on for next door.
Article twenty nine would cover that?
Well, if article twenty nine passed, then yes, but I, to cover your bases, you want to have this question on there separately. Because people may say, oh yeah, I want to fix those sidewalks downtown, but then they don't want to give you the other and you don't want to take the chance of having that happen. And then the middle school is iffy. Then we have the shoreline zoning ordinance on here for Kippawal, which you've already sent to the ballot. And the last question would be, shall the town authorize the board of selectmen to purchase playground equipment using funds from the sale of the Cottrell Elementary School to be placed at Monmouth Beach Park at a cost of no more than thirty thousand dollars? That's all.
I think article thirty. The playground. And using control school funds considering now know that we're so depleted on those. And not knowing where we're headed with the rest of re reclaimed buildings. I don't think I want to see the, the playground on there, not knowing where we're ending up.
Article thirty, thirty four.
Or sorry, I'm looking at this old one. Sorry, sorry. I'm looking at the old one. Sorry.
I think it needs to be on there. We have been talking about putting a playground or fixing the playground down there for ten years or more. And, and you have, currently have those big metal swing sets, two of them. Which take up a lot of space and are probably not terribly safe. And it's one of the things that people have been talking about that they want. If you don't want to fund it out of the control school, just put it on as a general fund question.
Mister? The new playground at the new memorial school. Playground at the old school.
The playground at the new memorial school isn't allowed to be used after hours, I don't believe. Is that right, Doug?
I don't know.
They've, they've been pretty.
Kids go down there. I mean, it's open to the.
Mister Chairman? This Calvin Hosh.
Yes, Calvin.
Uh, the, the playground that I got quotes on is not going to take up any more space than the present swing, that sand square that's cut out there. It's all going to fit in that same space. So you're not losing any more space, a green space than you already are, have there. The swings that are presently there now, if Linda talks to the insurance company, they're going to say they need to go. Because of their age. So something that needs to be done down there if we're going to keep some kind of entertainment for the younger kids.
So I, I agree with, I agree with Calvin. I, I agree with Tim that that thirty thousand dollars out of the control funds is not really going to be missed. Whichever question passes regarding the school reuse. If it's demoed, then instead of, you know, borrowing or bonding three, two hundred thousand dollars, you borrow a bond, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Or, you know, if you rebuilt, the decision's made to rebuild it in, at one point seven million, then instead of having three hundred thousand dollars to, to lower that amount, you have two hundred and seventy thousand to lower that amount. And, and when you're talking about that amount of money, it's not a huge, it's not a huge deal financed over twenty years. So I mean, just from that point of view, I think it's a, it's actually a good investment to do the playground out of the sale of the school.
And actually, I think we were only confident on doing about two hundred thousand out of the sale of the school. And if we get three after costs and everything, there ought to be thirty left over. Because you have, you have transferred costs and taxes. Broker fees and whatnot.
A few people that I've talked to who use the beach and are familiar with it were actually are not in favor doing, putting a playground down there. They think the beach area is for a beach, not for, you know, playground.
That's, you know, kind of where I'm going. It's, it's, it's a beach. It's not a playground. It's, it's a beach and having space for people to sit and have picnics and have space around them rather than having to sit in the poison ivy or next to a metal thing. I mean, for me, I would rather see green space next to the lake rather than a structure.
Well, I've talked to a lot of people that do want it, Douglas. And, you know, I'm sure some people don't, some people do. It's one of those things. I think it's prudent for us to offer the choice to the public and let them decide. And I'll move, we put it on the warrant.
Now, second amendment. I just, I know that there's a I go, I visit a lot of lakes through the course of the season, but I'm pretty sure that up at Newport at Sebastopol, it's not right at the boat launch area because they don't, they don't have a beach there, but they have a boat launch. And Dan, do you remember? If adjacent to that, the next lot over, there's some activity quite type of equipment for kids.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall. I, I went there last year and I just can't picture it. There is a, there is a park space there, but.
There's a park space and it's next, it's, you have to leave the boat for launch area to get to it. But I'm pretty sure I saw some playground type of equipment there.
Yeah, it's possible.
I think it's pretty rare. I mean, went through it as a beach, but you know, it's for the beach. It's for the kids to, you know, use the water, same at Reed Field on Maracay. And I I think it's probably true of Cobussy too. That they don't have playground equipment. It's a, it's a beach. It'd be pretty rare to have, you know, the sort of thing at Monmouth Beach. I don't know if it would, would create more of a problem because it would attract out of towners. Maybe, I don't know if it would or not, but.
I thought we already addressed that problem.
Wow, I don't know. Maybe.
Or issue.
The only, the only, I mean, I see a benefit to it just from the aspect of you get down there with your four or five kids and a couple of those kids are four, five, six years old. They don't want to, you know, they want to go play on the playground while the older kids want to go splash around in the water or sit on the sand or whatever. I mean, I'm not totally invested in one or the other. I'm just saying I don't see a harm in that.
My, my thing with the whole discussion is placement and what's the size of it. How, how many people would it displace for limited space you have over there? And I don't know if anybody knows if Calvin's, you know, or Tim has scaled out what this playground would look like at thirty thousand dollars. I'm assuming that's quite a bit of playground equipment.
I, I, Mister Chairman?
Yes.
The playground uh, unit plus the swings are going to occupy the same space that the present swings occupy now. You're not giving up any more land. The playground also has to be back from the water a hundred feet. So we are over that hundred feet line a little bit in a couple of spots. So we have to move it maybe like five feet back towards the woods. But it's going to be the same size space that we have now occupied by the swings.
How does that impact the trees that were there? We're moving it.
There's approximately from the sand to the trees, forty some feet.
Is there a change?
And I'm talking to get to a hundred feet to make it all legit because a hundred feet line comes into that sand area a little bit. Right now, the way that the last time Tim had the guy do the drawing down there, it comes in about five feet. So you're only moving five feet out of forty. You have forty feet there to the trees.
Drawings or anything.
I don't have anything that's.
Is, is that something that, I know we're talking about a special meeting. We could probably clear this up if we had a plaque of where this whole thing would be situated as it's proposed. I'm not opposed to the funding. It's more of a position that I'm concerned about.
I would say let's deal with it at the next meeting then. And in the meantime, Michael, go down and take a look.
Well, that's.
I, I don't know what size.
I'm at the beach. I mean, I grew up there. I know what that beach looks like. I was there last night. But I mean, we need to see.
What I'm saying is Calvin has told us. All right, we have two existing swing sets there with sand around them carved out.
I know what he told me.
And he's saying it's not, that's the exact size. So all you gotta do is go look at that and say, oh, it's going to be five foot back and, and that'll tell you.
I, okay, I know exactly what it looks like, but I'd like to see whatever drawings somebody has that they've done. I mean, is that too much to ask? But there's a drawing supposedly of, of this?
It appears so.
I don't know. Can you make a drawing, Calvin?
No, but I mean, I, you said that somebody.
Calvin, Calvin did all of it. And I just.
I gave, I gave Tim a copy of what the playground thing looks like. But I'll get a bigger print for you and I can modify if I get permission from Linda. I'll modify the drawing that we have of the beach area with the playground on it.
If the board wants drawings, then whoever wants to provide the drawings, I've not up to me.
Where the trees are and, and all of that. I mean, if.
If you're not going to deal with it, you might want to remove your motions though.
It's fine. I'm going to postpone until Wednesday.
Well, just don't even, just remove your motions and I'll, we'll discuss it on Wednesday.
Whatever. I didn't make the motion. I had discussed, should we put it off to get some drawings, but it sounds like that's an uphill battle. So that's fine. We could just go with what we have for information and decide then if that's the case.
The problem, the problem is, is that this drawing is made by your engineer when you built the beach. Okay, they own those drawings. I do not have permission from them to modify it. All I'm going to do is draw on there the exact size of where it's going to go. But they, they don't like people playing with their drawings.
So we're talking about replacing two swing sets with thirty thousand dollars. Is that what this, that's what I'm hearing?
It's taking them out and putting a
A modern, up to date.
Right, different equipment in there and doing the safety. Right, Calvin, doing the safety base you have to do.
It's all safety. It's going to have the new bar, the, the proper amount of playground mix under it, which is a foot over the whole area. It won't be sand. And it will uh, the unit is like a couple of slides. And, you know, kind of similar to what we had up at Cottrell, only smaller. And then there'll be on the end of it, which I guess you guys could pick which end, there'll be four swings that meet the present code.
So we're waiting, we're gonna.
Well, there's a motion in the second. And I'm not sure if I can withdraw a motion that now belongs to the chair.
You can, he can ask you to withdraw your motions and, and if you both want to withdraw them, then I'll just bring this back for discussion. This wasn't something to vote on tonight. Anyway, I was just going down through the questions and making sure you were good with everything on here. So that I can put a warrant together and bring it back on the seventh to sign it. But we can finish this discussion unless you want to vote on this tonight.
Wait. Check it out more.
I'm fine, I'm fine with as it sits right now.
Okay. So let's call for a vote. All those in favor of the that, that article being on our warrant. And all those opposed, the article being on.
But I guess Linda, we need to plan for removing the swing sets out of there because they're not going to meet code and they're not going to meet insurance requirements.
Can I get your question that you redrafted from new? So I can put a packet together for the next, for next.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to ask Mike something first.
So I'm, that's, that's all I've got.
What were you doing? Second?
I'm one of your questions. Other question you answered, something written down.
We'll run down.